We'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. Mr. Platt is a little bit late, but he'll be here. And our first item on the agenda is our invocation and our plecto privileges.
Let's power heads, please. Heavenly Father, we are meeting here today to conduct city business. We ask that you guide our hearts and our minds in the spirit of fairness, right thought and speech, Lord. We ask that you give us wisdom upon our meeting so that we can make informed decisions to better our community. Thank you for being the source of guidance today, Lord. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Come in, Seppistonia. Presentation, Mr. Gilbert Sanchez of the new fire truck.
Mayor and council, it is my pleasure to announce to the citizen of Mission our of our new apparatus, a 2018 Spartan towing apparatus. We received this apparatus about three weeks ago. We've been preparing and training on this truck, being prepared to put it in service. It will be stationed on north inspiration at the Relidge Fire Station. Okay? Once again, this is a replacement. We're putting our frontline unit on reserve status and put this in frontline. As you can see, here's our engine company based out of the Sherman plantation area. I do have representatives of the company, which is municipal fire specialists here, that wish to talk to the group in regards to this. Also want to thank the committee and especially Engineer Justin Longoria in regards to the efforts in regards to the planning of this apparatus, as well as you all, the council, to give this opportunity to provide this to the citizen of Mission.
Good afternoon. My name is Melinda Zamora with Municipal Fire Apparatus Specialists, and we just wanted to thank the City of Mission for the opportunity to work on this fire truck. The committee chief put a lot of work into getting you all a really, really nice truck, and we're really happy to work with you guys on this, and thank you again for the opportunity.
Thank you. Thank you all very much.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Chief.
Next item we have is a report by Chamber of Commerce.
Good afternoon, Mayor, City Council. I'll begin with recent events. Our first event on the agenda is our bimonthly business mixer that occurred on February 1st at Bob's Steakhouse. Overall, we had 125 people in attendance for this event. Next, on February 8th, we held a member spotlight mixer with our member Texas Regional Bank at their Mission location, which is located off of Griffin Parkway. The event featured two hospital executives from the Mission area, which were Mission Regional Medical Center CEO Kane Dawson and South Texas Health System COO Lance Ames. Overall, we had over 200 people in attendance for this event. This past Saturday, we hosted our annual mega winter Texan Fiesta in the parking lot area of the Seed Building. Overall, the chamber distributed over 2,900 tickets. As, you know, winter Texans enjoy vendors, listening to music, and having lunch. We certainly want to thank the city departments that were all involved for the logistics of this event. In terms of upcoming events, on Thursday, March 8th, we have a ribbon cutting scheduled with G Power Energy, which will take place at their location. The address is 2518 East Griffin Parkway, Mission, Texas. The event will take place from 5:30 to 7:30 PM with the ribbon cutting scheduled for 6:00 PM sharp. Following day on Friday, March 9th, the chamber is scheduled to have its second Buenos Aires luncheon of the year with guest speaker Alberto Altamorino. He's the co-founder and CEO of City Flag, Inc. The luncheon will take place at Cimarron Country Club from 11:30 AM to 1:00 PM. Last on today's agenda is the, our annual golf tournament, which this year will be calling the Tom Landry Golf Classic. It'll take place on March 23rd at Cimarron Country Club with a tee time of 8:00 AM. Teams of three will begin at $500 with additional sponsorship opportunities available. So, any questions?
No questions. Any questions?
Thank you, Mayor and City Council.
Thank you very much. Next item is the department report. We have them in your packet. If you all have any questions, don't hesitate to ask.
A move for approval is presented.
Second.
Do have a motion, second, to approve. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Yes, motion carries. Item six is participants' participation. Anybody from the audience who would like to address the council, state your name and address.
La Mesa, Higuita, 3920 North Sherry Road, Palmhurst, Texas.
Yes, sir.
Your Honor, councilpersons, you know I've been a big fan of the City of Mission for a long time. Sold my restaurant and store at 2,600 East Griffin Parkway, which we had owned and operated for 18 years. That store was very good to us, and no, I have not retired. In that, I did jokingly mention to a friend that I might consider running for council or maybe even the mayorship.
Well, you got some point.
And then I remembered, well, I don't live in the City of Mission any longer, so I can't. And he said, hey, that doesn't matter in Mission. I said, come on, what are you talking about? No, you don't have to be a resident there. You just make sure you sign certain things, you get your houses homesteaded, and things will be just fine. Well, since I didn't really want to run that much, I decided to take a look for myself. And I really couldn't believe what I found. I did look through the appraisal district website, and I found some very concerning documents indicating homesteads, people in office, maybe not being the true residents, and residents being defined as where you live and not necessarily where you own, where you vote, or where you get your mail. Two big different things. Along with that, certainly the homestead exemption on a house that's not being lived in is a problem for the city and the tax collections, because those homestead exemptions are only due if you live there. So I'm concerned for the City of Mission. Why didn't I go to the police to report my findings? Well, I think this body is the one who will share my concern for the integrity of the upcoming election. It's not anything to take easily that possibly there is representation that does not live in the city, and I think that there's ways to determine it without just asking where do you get your vote counted, or where do you get your taxes. There's a way to look at the historical use of utilities, neighbor anecdotal evidence, question and answers. And again, why didn't I go to the city manager, or why didn't I go to the city attorney? I felt this matter was of enough importance to bring it directly to you in this audience with everyone here so that we can make our own decisions. I've given you enough information to make the determination on your own as to who this person might be, and I know that together you will find out what the true residences are of all of the members of this council and the candidates. I want to thank you again for everything Mission has done for us.
Well, who are you talking about? Dr. Canio, what?
Well, I was going to avoid using names, but since you-
Well, we all know that he lives outside the City of Mission. We've known that for 10 years.
Well, then I'm calling on the city to read the city charter, where it does require a resident be in those positions.
Well, we all know that he lives outside the City of Mission, and-
Again, I'm concerned.
I brought it before our city attorney. I brought it before Mr. Garcia, that it is a serious problem to have somebody live outside the city and sit on the city council.
Well-
I don't have any problem with him being on the council. Not at all. But it's about time. The last time she ran against me, I knew he did not live here, and I didn't have any problem with that, and I don't have any problem now. The thing is that now that you brought it up, that I've talked to the attorney, and for them to report it to the district attorney or to the Attorney General. Now, it's entirely up to the administration. I can only do so much, and I don't have any problem with him running on the ballot. Now, he should know what he's doing. He's been lying to the people of Mission for the last 10 years, because he does not live in Mission. He has an old housing mission that he uses where we deliver the agenda to his west room. We've been doing that for this longest time. Now, it's up to you to go to the courthouse and talk to the attorney, I mean, district attorney, and tell him what's going on. I've already told the two principal parties of this community that I had that concern, and I said, I did this three or four months ago. I didn't do it a year ago. I did it two or three months ago. I should have done this 10 years ago, but I had no problem with it. That's the way I feel, and I have no problem with him running. He's got all the right, you know? If he can get away with him lying to the people of Mission, that's fine. I have no problem with that either.
Your Honor-
He needs to live with himself.
Your Honor, I'd like to close with one thing. We had a, everyone here, y'all probably knew Neil King, King Gary Davis, Garcia. And I have learned from David and Dell, one of his favorite sayings, and I'm going to leave it with the council today, and it's the do right rule. If it's not right, don't do it.
That's right.
And that's all I have to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Anybody else that might want to direct yourself with the council? Okay. Thank you all very much. We go on to our public hearings, and we have item As.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Item 1.1A is a public hearing for rezoning of TechSmart number 43 subdivision. The property is zoned AOI, and the intent is to rezonate to C3 general business. The applicant is 7-Eleven, Inc., and if the council is inclined to approve this rezoning request, it would require the adoption of an ordinance. On January 24th, 2018, the Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing to consider this rezoning request. The subject site is located at the northwest corner of Mile 3 Road and La Homa Road, and the corner commercial lot is near the boundary limits of the City of Mission in an area that was recently annexed in 2013. The surrounding zones include agriculture open in from to all directions. Mayor and Council, 7-Eleven has purchased all of the Stripe stores in the City of Mission, and the majority of the stores in the Rio Grande Valley, and they're going to be taking ownership of all the stores, and one of the things that they asked is, is there any issues with any of our stores that we've acquired here in Mission? The only issue we had with this one was that it was in an area that was annexed by the city, and it was still zoned ag. So I told them the best thing would be for you to rezone this property to general commercial. Thus, you're in full compliance. There was no public opposition during the P&amp;Z meeting. The board unanimously recommended approval. Staff is recommending approval, as is our city manager. This is a public hearing. Item 1.1A is now before you.
Anybody in favor or against this request? Anybody in favor or against this request? Not?
I move for approval.
The recommendation is to go ahead and approve ordinance 4592.
Second.
And also approve the rezoning. Do have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries. Next item.
Thank you, Mayor Council. Item 1.1B is a public hearing for rezoning of lots 1 and 2, Dollar General, Mission, Mile 3 subdivision. The property is zoned AOI, and the intent is to rezonate to C3. This is a city-initiated rezoning, and if the council is inclined to approve this rezoning request, it would require the adoption of an ordinance. On January 24th, 2018, the Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing to consider this rezoning request. The subject site is located near the northwest corner of Mile 3 Road and La Homa Road. The commercial lot is in the boundary limits of the, or in a recently annexed area in the city limits of Mission. This is just west of the rezoning that was just approved in the prior item 1.1A, and we initiated this rezoning because it also is a commercial lot, and we felt that we should change it to a commercial lot. There was no public opposition during the Planning and Zoning Commission. The board unanimously recommended approval. Staff is recommending approval of, as is our city manager. This is a public hearing. Item 1.1B is now before you.
Anybody in favor or against this request? Anybody in favor or against? If not, the recommendation is to go ahead and approve ordinance 4593, and also approve the rezoning of Lot 1 and 2.
Motion to approve, may I?
Second.
Do have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion carries. Next item.
Thank you, Mayor Council. Item 1.1C is a public hearing for a conditional use permit for the sale and onsite consumption of alcoholic beverages at Bonita Restaurant. The address is 2306 East Expressway 83, Suite 5, being Lot 1, Cimarron Crossing Phase 1 subdivision. The property is zoned C3 general business, and the applicant is La Bonita Cocina Traditional, LLC. And if the council is inclined to approve this conditional use permit request, it would require the adoption of an ordinance. On January 24th, 2018, the Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing to consider this conditional use permit request. The subject site is located near the southwest corner of Sherry Road and US Expressway 83. The applicant desires a CUP for the sale and onsite consumption of alcoholic beverages at this restaurant. The restaurant offers a variety of Mexican dishes and low-calorie dishes. The restaurant is requesting to add beer and wine to its menu. The hours of operation are Monday through Saturday from 11:00 AM to midnight. A total of five employees man the operation, and parking and landscaping are meeting code at the multi-tenant Commercial Plaza. There was no public opposition during the P&amp;Z meeting. The board unanimously recommending approval. Staff is recommending approval for a period of two years, at which time the applicant will have to renew their TABC license and conditional use permit. Our city manager is also recommending approval. This is a public hearing. Item 1.1C is now before you.
There be two ordinance, 4594?
Yes, sir.
4595?
Yes, sir.
Anybody in favor or against this request? Anybody in favor or against? If not?
I move for approval.
Second.
The conditional, we have a motion and a second to go ahead and approve ordinance 4594, and also adopt 4595, and also to adopt the conditional use permit. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries. Item D.
Thank you, Mayor Council. Item 1.1D is a public hearing for a conditional use permit for the sale and onsite consumption of alcoholic beverages at Monaco's Burgers &amp; More. The addresses 2507 and 2509 East Griffin Parkway, being lots 3 and 4 of Block 2, Tierra Grande Commercial Plaza subdivision. The property is zoned C3 general business, and the applicant is CGS Enterprises, LLC. And if the council is inclined to approve this conditional use permit, it would require the adoption of an ordinance. On January 24th, 2018, the Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing to consider this conditional use permit. The subject site is located near the northeast corner of East Griffin Parkway and Tierra Drive. The applicant desires a CUP for the sale and onsite consumption of alcohol at his restaurant. The existing restaurant offers a variety of made-to-order burgers and other Tex-Mex dishes. The restaurant is requesting to add alcohol in the form of beer and wine to its current menu. The hours of operation are Monday through Thursday from 11:00 AM to 9:00 PM, Friday and Saturday from 11:00 AM to 10:00 PM, and Sunday from 11:00 AM to 3:00 PM. A total of six employees man the operation. Parking is held uncommon and meets code, as does landscaping. There was no public opposition during the P&amp;Z meeting. The board unanimously recommended approval. Staff is recommending approval for a period of two years, at which time the applicant will have to renew their TABC license and conditional use permit. Our city manager is also recommending approval. This is a public hearing. Item 1.1D is now before you.
Anybody in favor or against this request? Anybody in favor or against? If not, the conditional use permits and the adoption of ordinance 4596 and 4597.
I move for approval. Mayor is presented.
Second, Mayor.
We do have a motion and a second to adopt ordinance 4596 and 4597, and also that would mean that we will approve the conditional use permit and the sale on-site consumption. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries. Item E.
Thank you, Mayor Council. Item 1.1E is a public hearing for a conditional use permit for a drive-through service window at Banana Leaf Haralcho's Restaurant. The address is 3604 North Conway Avenue, being .63 acre tract out of Lot 30-7 West Edition of Sherry Land subdivision. The property is zoned C3, and the applicant is Alejandro Moreno, and if the council is inclined to approve this conditional use permit, it would require the adoption of an ordinance. On January 24th, 2018, the Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing to consider this conditional use permit. The subject site is located in the southeast area of Victory and Conway Avenue. The applicant has operated a drive-through service window at this location since August of 2013. The last approval came in January 2015, at which time they were granted a three-year approval. The hours of operation are every day from 7:00 AM to 10:00 PM. A total of five employees per shift, two shifts a day, man the operation. Parking and landscaping are existing and meet code. There was no public opposition during the P&amp;Z meeting. The board unanimously recommended approval. Staff is recommending approval of the CUP for life of use, subject to continued compliance with building, fire, and health codes, and the restriping of the parking lot. Our city manager is also recommending approval. This is a public hearing. Item 1.1E is now before you.
Anybody in favor or against this request? Anybody in favor or against? If not, do make a motion to approve ordinance 4598, and also to adopt an approved conditional use permit to the drive-through services.
I move for approval.
Second.
Do have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries. Item F.
Thank you, Mayor Council. Item 1.1F is a public hearing for a conditional use permit to construct a new 100-foot wireless telecommunications tower on property zoned AOI for T-Mobile. The address is 2108 West Griffin Parkway, being a 50-by-50 leased area of 2.52 acres out of Lot D, BL Miller subdivision. The property is zoned AOI, and the applicant is Crystal Garcia in care of T-Mobile. And if the council is inclined to approve this conditional use permit, it would require the adoption of an ordinance. On January 24th, 2018, the Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing to consider this conditional use permit request. The subject site is located approximately a quarter-mile west of Inspiration Road along the north side of Griffin Parkway. Access to the 50-by-50 leased site is provided through Griffin Parkway. T-Mobile is proposing to install a new 100-foot self-supported tower with the associated ground equipment. The location was chosen by T-Mobile to fill in gaps in their network and expand their cellphone coverage. There was no public opposition during the P&amp;Z meeting. The board unanimously recommended approval. Staff is recommending approval of the CUP subject to the installation of a mesh screen or solid buffer around the perimeter of the 50-by-50 fenced-in area. We're also recommending that they allow other cellphone providers to co-locate onto the proposed tower, that the tower not exceed 100 feet in total height, and that the tower be moved back 200 feet from its original location. Our city manager is also recommending approval. This is a public hearing. Item 1.1F is now before you.
Anybody in favor or against this request? Anybody in favor or against? If not, the ordinance is 4599.
I move for approval.
Second.
We do have a motion and a second to approve ordinance 4599, and also to approve the conditional use permit. All those in favor signify by, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Disposition of minutes, we do have the city council meeting that we had on January the 22nd, 2018. We do need to approve those minutes.
I move for approval.
Second.
Do have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries. We do have to acknowledge the receipt of some minutes that we had from our local boards, Mission Economic Development Corporation, special meeting on November the 16th, the Mission Tech's incremental reimbursement zone on December the 7th, Mission redevelopment authority on December the 7th of 2017, Planning and Zoning Commission on January the 10th of 2018. We do need a motion to acknowledge the minutes.
I move to approve the acknowledged receipt of minutes.
Do have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries. 4.1, Ms. Carrillo.
Yes, good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Item 4.1 would be the approval of Resolution 1534, and this is to conduct joint elections with Mission CIST in accordance with Texas Election Code, Section 11.0581. This code requires, Mayor, that the school district conduct joint elections with the city, so we will share a common voting polling location. And this has already been approved by the Mission School District.
Does anybody have any problem with that? Huh?
I move for approval.
Okay.
Second.
We do have a motion and a second to approve Resolution 1534. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries. I guess there, anybody has any problem with that? 4.2.
Yes, Mayor Council. Item 4.2 would be approval of ordinance 4600, calling a special election in Mission Texas, providing for the election of council member for place four, providing for polling places and other matters related to said election. This is required by Article 16, Section 65B of the Texas Constitution, which states that any officer who announces candidacy in a general election for any office other than the office held shall constitute a vacancy and shall be filled pursuant to law in the same manner as other vacancies for which such offices are filed. This ordinance will provide for a special election to be held on Saturday, May 5th, as authorized by the election code. This would be for council member place four. Early voting by personal appearance and election day polling locations will be the same. It will be on the same ballot as the May 5th election, and filing for the special election will begin tomorrow and will end on Monday, March 5th, and that's per the election code.
So whoever wants to file?
For place four, packets are ready. Once this is approved, then packets can be picked up tomorrow, and they have until March 5th, which is a Monday, to turn in their application for place four.
You're filing deadline, March 5th?
March 5th, yes, sir, 5:00 PM.
And now it is when?
This Friday, the 16th.
This Friday?
Yes, sir.
But the other one have till March 5th?
Yes, sir, and that's per the election code. We've reviewed all that with the attorney, so, and with Secretary of State's office.
Okay. Do need a motion to, well, what do we do here?
Yes, sir, it's ordinance 4600.
Has he resigned, or what is he going to do?
What disposition now, I think the attorney can-
Well, before we approve this, he's got to resign.
Yes, Mayor, so when the candidate files, he automatically resigns by operation of law. So the position is vacated as of the date of filing, and then he serves as a holdover for 120 days.
Okay.
Mayor, I'm so conscious that I'm resigning.
Okay.
The motion of this, we have already discussed-
I know that, but-
-with legal counsel, and I know exactly that the word automatic was put in there by the state of Texas and our legislators.
Approve the ordinance 4600.
Second.
Calls for a special election in Mission, Texas, providing for his, for the election of a council member. If he hasn't resigned, how can we approve this?
Because he's already filed an application for-
That means automatically give us his-
It's an automatic yes, sir. It's a resign to-
As long as we understand that, and we have it on record, because, como es, las cosas no se entienden. Ya ves que vino aquel muchacho lita.
I am very clear with that.
I am very clear with that. My legal counsel has already reviewed it, and I have already accepted the fact that the word "automatic" is not... Is in the law. It's specifically stated, and I clearly understand it, Mayor.
Well, you don't need a legal counsel with us.
When it comes to state law...
So we need a motion to approve ordinance 4600?
Yes, sir.
Second.
We do have a motion by Norrie Garza.
Second.
And a second by Mr. Plata. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries.
Thank you.
So, I don't... That's all we have to do here. 4.6. 4.3.
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council. Item 4.3 is to reclassify utility accounts for the first quarter of 2016, January and March through March, for the amount of $15,857.19. Staff and city manager recommend approval.
We do need a motion to approve the recommendation.
Move to approve.
Second.
Do have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Yes, motion carries.
Thank you.
4.4, Mr. Cordova. Gordoza.
Yes, sir. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Item 4.4 is authorized by city manager as per Section 3D of the Medicare 911 contract, where the city of Mission has the sole authority for entering into agreements with any and all mutually providers of emergency medical services to the city. The Office of Emergency Management is seeking authorization to authorize our city manager to enter into contract with Idaug County EMS to provide emergency mobile intensive care backup ambulance services for the general public in the city of Mission. The term of the contract shall be for two years at a zero subsidy for services rendered. Our staff and city manager also recommend approval. This item is now before you.
I move for approval. Is presented.
Second.
Okay. We are approving a...
This is a mutual aid provider. We already have a 911 provider.
Okay, well, that's what I need him to say, that this is a mutual aid provider.
Yes, sir.
Not the provider that we have.
That's correct.
This is the provider that we... That's gonna be providing service in case ours cannot respond.
That's correct. That is correct, Mayor, our backup.
That's what we need to approve.
Yes, sir.
Not what you just read here. So what we need to approve is that we are going to approve a mutual...
Mutual aid provider, which is a backup to our 911 provider, which is Medicare.
Okay, and it would be Idaug County EMS.
That is correct, Mayor.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
So you want to make another motion?
Uh...
Mutual aid provider.
Yes, I move to accept the contract for the mutual aid providers as presented.
Yes.
Second.
Second. We do have a motion and a second to approve a mutual aid provider. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries.
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate it.
Thank you. 4.5.
Good afternoon. Item 4.5 is an approval of a resolution of the Mission City Council amending Resolution 1399 pertaining to investment officers. This is as per government code, Chapter 2256.005F. The resolution approves the city manager, Martín Garza, the finance director, myself, Angie Vela.
1535?
And the assistant finance director, Eza Garcia, as the public funds investment officers of the city of Mission. Staff and city manager recommend approval.
The approval of the resolution is 1535. We do need a motion to approve the resolution.
I'm going to approve. Second, Mayor.
Do have a motion and a second to approve Resolution 1535. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries. 4.6.
Item 4.6 is the acceptance of the quarterly report of investments for the quarter ending December 31st, 2017, and interest earned for three months, ending December 31st, 2017. The increases for all investments was $521,774.56, and the decreases were $3,650,397.60, leaving an outstanding investment balance of $24,398,948.85. And the interest earned for the three months year-to-date was $58,013.2. Staff and city manager recommend approval.
Okay, so we are approving the quarterly report of his investments for the quarter ending... How much is the money?
$24.3 million is the outstanding balance, and $58,000 is the interest earned.
Need a motion to approve the recommendation.
I'm going to approve. Second, Mayor.
Do have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, City... Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council. I come before you to present item 4.7. Change order number one for additional fire hydrants and groundwater drainage canal for Anseldo's Phase II water and sewer project. An additional of 42 fire hydrants will be installed throughout the project for future development and fire protection. Also, comfort dams will need to be placed on both sides of the canal to reduce the flow of water seepage to be able to install the water line and sewer line. Authorization is being requested to introduce an allowance... An allowance item for future utility conflicts, as well as forty working dates to be added to the contract time to be able to construct additional work. The total amount of the change order is $340,553.24, which equals 9.88% of original contract amount. Change order is less than 25% cap allowed by the Texas Local Government Code. Change order has been approved by the tourist board and will be reimbursed to the city. Staff and city manager recommends approval.
Do need a motion to approve the change order of $340,553.24. That's the correct amount of the change order. We do need a motion.
Don't move, Mayor.
Do have a motion.
Second.
And a second to go ahead and approve this change order. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Yes, motion carries.
Thank you, Mayor. I also have item 4.8. Authorization to award bids to RDH Site and Concrete for the street improvement of Quique de la Garza Loop. We received 10 bid responses. We award the RDH Site concrete lowest responsible bidder, meeting all specifications, with a bid amount of $458,040. Staff and city manager recommends approval.
Is there a motion to be offered?
So move.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to accept the bids as presented on item 4.8. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion carries unanimously. Next item?
Thank you.
Mr. Benson?
Good afternoon, Mayor Protem, City Council. I have before you item 4.9 is authorization to award bid for right-of-way mowing and maintenance services. We received seven bid responses. This is to award the bid to TDL Properties, who is the lowest responsible bidder, meeting all the specifications. The bid amount was for $74,147.68. Staff and city manager recommend approval.
Are there any questions or motion to be offered?
So move.
Second.
A motion and a second to accept the award bid for the right-of-way mowing and maintenance services to TDL Properties?
TDL.
Oh, TDL.
Yes, sir.
Okay, for $74,147.68. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Next item?
Item 4.10 is authorization to award bid for the fencing of the new dog parks at Banworth Park and Benson Palm Community Park. We received 13 bid responses. This is to award the bid to Excellent Fence Company, who is the lowest responsible bidder, meeting all specifications. Their bid amount was for $43,546.45. Staff and city manager recommend approval.
Any questions or motion?
So move.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to accept the bid for the fencing of the new dog parks at Banworth and Benson Palm Community Park to Excellent Fence for the amount of $43,546.45. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Next item?
Item number 4.11 is authorization to solicit bids for fence installation. This is along the west property line of Birdwell Park and continuing along the right-of-way of the north property line of Lot 1, Barnes, Birdwell subdivision. Staff and city manager recommend this approval.
Any questions or...
So move.
There's a motion?
Second.
And a second to solicit bids for the installation of a fence at the property line of Birdwell Park. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mayor Protem, City Council members. I come before you seeking authorization to award bids for the purchase of cold water meters for the Public Works Department. The city of Mission has accepted an open 4-bid responses for cold water meters. Staff recommends awarding to Core and Main LP, who is the lowest responsible bidder, meeting all specifications. Recommendation is based solely on estimated quantities, and orders will be placed on a necessary basis throughout the one-year base term. The contract term will be for one year with one year renewal option. Again, staff recommendation is authorization to award bid to Core and Main LP.
Any questions or motion?
So move.
Estimated cost is $60,000.
Yes, the estimated cost is $60,000. Yes, sir.
There's a motion?
Second.
And a second to authorize the bid to Core and Main LP for the purchase of cold water meters for a yearly estimated cost of $60,000. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion carries unanimously.
Next item?
Yes, sir, Mayor City Council members. Item 4.13 is the authorization to engage Meldon and Hunt, Inc. for engineering services to renew the wastewater treatment plant permit. Again, staff seeking authorization for the renewal of wastewater treatment plant permit that expires June 1st, 2018. Engineering services to renew the wastewater treatment plant. Permit will be in accordance with TCEQ requirements. The total fixed fee by Meldon and Hunt, Inc. will be of $20,000. Again, staff recommendation is authorization to engage Meldon and Hunt.
I move for approval.
Second.
Do have a motion and a second to go ahead and engage... An authorized to engage with Meldon and Hunt? Total fees, fixed fee is $20,000?
$20,000, yes, sir.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Yes, motion carries. Item 14?
Yes, sir, Mayor City Council members. Item 4.14. It's the approval of purchase of Micro solve and Auto solve for the sanitary sewer lift stations and wastewater treatment plant from a sole-source vendor. Sole-source vendor, manufacturer Biotech Industries, has granted the rights to Evergreen Southwest to sell and market products for both chemicals. Here in Texas, staff and city manager recommend approval for the purchase of Micro solve and Auto solve for lift stations and wastewater treatment plant from Evergreen Southwest as a sole-source vendor.
Do need a motion to approve the recommendation?
So moved.
Second.
Do have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Yes, motion carries. 415?
Yes, sir, Mayor City Council members. Item 415 is the authorization to solicit bid for the purchase of meter connect supplies for the Public Works Department. Meter connect supplies will be purchased on a necessary basis for new water meter and meter connections and repairs. Staff and city manager recommend approval to solicit for bids.
Do need a motion to approve the recommendation?
I'm going to approve.
Second.
Do have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Yes, motion carries. 416?
Yes, sir, Mayor City Council members. Item 416 is the authorization to solicit bids for the purchase of water line maintenance supplies for the Public Works Department. Water line maintenance supplies are needed by the Public Works Department for water distribution system daily maintenance operation. Staff and city manager recommend to solicit for bids.
Do need a motion, go out on bids?
So moved. Second.
Do have a motion and a second. Do go ahead and authorize to solicit for bids. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Yes, motion carries. Item 417. Ms. Longoria?
Yes, good afternoon. Item 4.17 is authorization to solicit bids for housing assistance program, Phase 17-1. I request approval for reconstruction of six homes. The Citizens Advisory Committee approved on January 23rd, 2018. Staff and city manager recommend approval.
Move for approval.
Second.
Do have a motion and a second to go ahead and approve the recommendation by city manager. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Yes, motion carries.
Thank you.
Item 418 is a budget amendment for MDC Capital Projects Fund. The amendment is for expenditures in the amount of $49,395. It's to allocate the remaining funds from the seed building project loan. These funds had already been encumbered at year-end, but they need to be carried over to the current year while they will be expensed and received. MDC Board approved the budget amendment on January 30th, 2018.
Need a motion to approve the budget amendment?
So move, Mayor.
Second.
The motion and second to approve a capital project budget amendment of $49,395. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Yes, motion carries.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council. I come before you to present item 4.19. Authorization to award bid to Southern Trenchless Solutions for the rehabilitation of four sanitary sewer lift stations. We received six bid responses. We recommend to award Southern Trenchless Solutions the lowest responsible bidder, meeting all specifications, in the amount of $124,000. Staff and city manager recommend approval.
Need a motion to approve the bid and also the recommendation by city manager.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve the affordable bid of $124,000 and approved by the city manager. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Yes, motion carries. Who's on 420? The Parks Man.
Good afternoon, Mayor, City Council. I have it for you. Item 420 is authorization for the submission of a grant application to National Parks and Recreation Association and Disney, and authorizing the mayor as authorized representative regarding the cities of participation in this program. This is a meet-me-at-the-park matching grant in the amount of $30,000. The maximum cost of the city incurred would be $35,000. This is for a new space rocket place structure for Astrolan Park. Staff and city manager recommend approval.
Do need a motion to go ahead and approve?
So move, Mayor.
$35,000? We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Against, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. 421?
Item 4.21, authorization to amend the business final proposal and award amended contract for the construction of Leo Peña Placita Park Mobility Improvement Project. The final proposal will remove alternate number six, edging total, and is to include alternates for contingency irrigation and site sign. Total project cost is in the amount of $1,444,803, with an increase of $60,000. Award amended contract to D. Wilson Construction. Staff and city manager recommend approval.
We do need a motion to go ahead and approve the recommendation?
I'm with you to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to go ahead and approve the city manager's recommendation. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries.
Thank you.
Mr. Lerman? 422?
Mayor, City Council, good afternoon. We come before you on item 422 to, to approve the professional service contract for Mark Sassi. Mr. Sassi is present. If we have any questions or concerns, Mr. Sassi has been with us since the inception of Civil Service in 2001, so we are requesting that we approve his contract. His retainer is $2,500 a month, and the Civil Service Commission, staff, and Mr. Garza is recommending approval.
Where's Mr. Sassi? We need to see him, man.
Sassi's here.
We almost forgot, it looks like.
I move for approval, Mayor. Second.
We do have a motion and a second to approve the retainer of $2,500 to Mr. Sassi. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Uh, we have, um... Our future candidate, este, pasele por acá, tu?
Peña.
Peña, se me van las cabras. You all need to take picture with him. Pasele. Cause he's been waiting, and, and let me move forward.
Do you want to? Yeah? Okay. We do have a motion and a second to approve the retainer of $2,500 to Mr. Sassi.
Yes. I'm with you to approve.
Aye.
Against, motion carries. 422? Nice of luck to you, okay?
Yes, good luck.
Good luck.
Thank you, Turk.
Yeah.
And I am more reserved.
The Mission, we're all thirty minutes.
Um, the next item is executive session. Is there a motion to go into executive session?
I make a motion to go into executive session pursuant to BTCA Government Code, Section 551.001.
Second.
Motion and a second to move into executive session. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. We'll be back in a little bit. I move that we go back into?
We have a motion?
Second, Mayor.
A second to go into, we convene, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries. We go back to item 7.1?
Mayor, on 7.1A, if the council wishes to take action, we would need a motion authorizing the city manager and city attorney to retain the legal services of Alton Hall for the purpose of advising the city of Mission regarding Shereline Utilities LP request for termination of existing franchise agreement and further negotiating, drafting, and advising on a new franchise agreement with Encore Electric Delivery Company, LLC, for the city of Mission.